Good evening and welcome to the Asheville City Council. This is May 11th and my name is Esther Mannheimer and I'm the Mayor of the City of Asheville. Before we begin, I want to let everyone know that we have continued public hearing item A, which is a consideration of an amendment to Articles 2 and 16 of the Unified Development Ordinance to Update Definitions and Regulations Related to Home Stays. So again, public hearing item A, which relates to home stays, will not be heard tonight and we will not take public comment on it tonight. It will be heard on the May 25th council agenda. So again, the home stay item under public hearings tonight will not be heard tonight. It will be heard on May 25th. All the callers who have signed up for this item will have the opportunity to sign up to speak on this item at the May 25th council meeting. Okay, all council members and staff are participating virtually. For those of you out there with us today, welcome. To help our audience follow along, I'll state each section of the agenda aloud. We're streaming live on our virtual engagement hub, which is accessible through the virtual engagement hub link on the front page of the city's website. We also have an option for the public to listen live by phone by dialing 855-925-2801 and entering the code 8345. We're also broadcasting live on the city's YouTube channel. For public comment, we ask callers to sign up in advance to join the live speaker queue. We'll only be taking live comments for those who signed up prior to tonight's meeting. Those callers have been provided instructions on how to participate. Each caller is allotted three minutes to speak for each agenda item. We will hear live comments for up to one hour for each agenda item. A reminder to callers, you will first hear staff inform council that you are next to speak, then you will hear an automated message letting you know that you are unmuted and live in the meeting. You may begin speaking after the automated message. To best ensure staff can support you in case of technical difficulties, we ask that you join the queue no later than the beginning of the agenda item before the agenda item on which you have signed up to speak. Additionally, if you have joined the speaker queue and need to disconnect before your time to speak, please hit star four before hanging up. You can then call back and using the same directions I just shared and staff will enter you back in the speaker queue of your agenda item. I would like to ask all those participating in tonight's public comment to follow council's rules of decorum. The rules include the following. Speakers are only allowed to speak one time during the public comment period for each agenda item. A person may speak only if they have signed up to speak in accordance with the city's procedures. Speakers' substitutions at the meeting are not allowed. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak on an agenda item. In general, each agenda item will have up to a total of one hour for public comment. A speaker may not share or relinquish any remaining time they have not used to another speaker. Speakers should not expect council members or city staff to comment on or respond to the speakers' comments during their three minutes. I'll now go through and introduce all council members and staff leadership. Council and staff, as I call your name, please say a quick hello. Vice Mayor Smith.
Hello.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Good evening.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Hello.
Councilwoman Roney.
Good evening.
Councilwoman Turner.
Hello.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Hello.
Our city manager, Deborah Campbell.
Hello.
City Attorney Brad Branham.
Good evening, everyone.
And our city clerk, Maggie Burleson.
Hello.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna start our agenda and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have any proclamations on tonight's agenda, so we will jump right into the consent agenda. Council, do any of you have any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda, or can I get a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Mayor, this is Sage. I do have one request to pull item B for further discussion and I'm happy to exercise a motion stating such.
Do you want to vote against it and that's why you want to have it considered separately? Or do you just want to ask a question about it?
I would like us to discuss it and consider a change to it. We may be able to interrupt the order about the permanent striping.
Why don't we do this? Can you ask your question regarding item B and let's see what staff can do to address it?
Sure, and there's more of a comment. I'm the liaison to the Sports Commission and the Sports Commission met a couple of weeks ago and discussed this and put forth a request. And then additionally, we heard from other user groups, other sports leagues. So I think, you know, with all that's going on, this might have just been a simple, we thought we were doing something great in permanently striping, but there are some outcomes that we may not be great. So the one example is the soccer club has grown in wild support in recent years and if they notch up to the next league, which they may, they're required to use a field that is striped for soccer, a permanently striped football field would not be able to be used, so they would kind of be without a home. We heard from six or seven other groups that had a similar experience and my understanding is each user has been, we had a no permanent striped turf. The turf is worn out, it's great that we're replacing it. The question is whether or not it should be permanently striped for one sport that disrupts all the other sports. And apparently there had been some kind of, maybe if it was difficulty or the one group that had the football stripes wasn't always able to stripe it. And the other groups have risen to the challenge and volunteered to help with that striping. So it may be, you know, a good way for the community groups to work together and solve their own issue. It may save us a little money if it's not permanently striped and I just wanted us to discuss and see.
Let me ask the city manager if we have any staff on this that's able to address that question. My understanding is that the item tonight has nothing to do with the striping at all.
That's correct.
And that this turf has already been ordered, so there's no...
It sounds like as of yesterday, whether or not it's been ordered, it may not have begun the process of being made.
So I believe that we have Kathy Ball and then we've got Richard White that could be backup and we should probably have someone from Park and Rec and from Capitol. So I think we should be staffed up to respond to this call, this question, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you, Deborah. This is Kathy Ball, Assistant City Manager. I guess I want to respond to a couple of things. One of them is that this contract does not include the purchase of the AstroTurf. The order has been put in with the striping that I think a lot of folks have seen, the markings that include football field as well as FIFA regulation field. The reason that we do that is because it does decrease the cost on having to place those lines in, particularly for sporting events that are sponsored by Parks and Recreation. So football is a league that the city has and works with in different ways, through camps or through little league football throughout the whole year. I think the concern that we would have in stopping the production and making it just a blank turf is that there would be the perception that during soccer, no one else would be able to use it. Because coming in during the soccer season and putting football markings on that could create a problem of thinking that it's only for the exclusion of everyone and only allows soccer to be played on that field during that season. So our thinking was that in working on that is that we would create a field that would be equitable and would include anybody playing on that any time of the year. And if I have missed something, I would invite Rodrick or Jade or Richard to speak up. And I see that Councilmember Roney has her hand up.
Yes, so I'm not feeling like I can support the whole move forward without a pause to address these concerns around the turf. And part of that is my familiarity with the multicultural and multilingual space that is happening throughout the week, throughout the year around soccer, but also the intergenerational leadership with folks like Principal Kush and Coach Connor and the students that are addressing lacrosse as an inclusive sport that hearkens and acknowledges the history of the sport and its indigenous roots. And it's changing the face of lacrosse in our city. So I think if we miss an opportunity here to truly meaningfully engage, then we'll end up in another situation like we have with the Walton Street Pool where we hear from the community, but then we do something different.
So if we could just clarify what this actual agenda item is, it's more about the installation of the turf, is that correct?
And that is exactly what I would say we shouldn't do yet.
We said that we would, I thought, communicate back to the manufacturer and further discuss whatever the next step should be in terms of the actual turf itself and how it would be striped or not striped, or figure out where we are, how much would it cost if we made any adjustments. I thought that that was the path for it. Kathy, Richard, Jade, Rodrick?
So I think we have and we have, our understanding is that it will cost about $25,000 because of the change in the timing of when we placed the order and the cost of materials to do that. So if we call the manufacturer of the turf and the striping and say we want to put a hold on it, that would be a cost of approximately $25,000. And if council wants to do that, and I think we could go ahead with the contract today if you wanted to direct staff, if there was enough members of council that wanted to direct staff to do that. We still think there's enough work in the drainage, storm drainage underneath the turf as well as getting the bedding and everything ready for the turf that it wouldn't hold up the contract. So if council wants to approve the contract, but then ask staff to go back and look at the striping of the turf, I think we would be open to doing that for a certain limit in time till we can make sure we get the turf in time for the contractor to put it in without increasing the cost.
There's probably some time constraints, right, to make it for the season, so I can appreciate that option, Kathy, and I would certainly like that. You know, part of this is just, the groups I'm hearing from didn't feel like they were a part of the process and they would have weighed in differently. And I think there's another email that came in since our budget session from the soccer group that said they certainly would have appreciated it too. They chose, you know, they supported the FIFA setup because they thought that was the best option they were being offered, but however, they would also like it not striped. So if that's possible and if other councilwomen are supportive of that, that would be my preference as well.
So Mayor, I'm wondering if you could help staff out here a little bit by asking for head nods around the turf issue?
Okay, Kathy, say again what you're proposing then.
So I would ask for head nods around us pausing and calling the contractor who's putting the turf together to do more engagement around the striping, but then as a separate vote on the item that's on the agenda. So that would be my ask, but I would ask for head nods or because we can't see everybody on the screen, maybe if...
What would be a separate vote on the agenda?
So the first agenda does not include the striping of the turf, so there would be a vote on that. And then there could be a separate head nod around directing staff to redo the striping of the turf, because those are two separate issues.
Okay, so council, then what we would be looking at is a motion to approve the full consent agenda, including the turf item, and then a second indication of your desire to see staff reengage around the striping for the turf. And somebody's making some phone call to the turf company and saying, "Hold the presses" or whatever the equivalent is of turf.
So what you're saying, Esther, is not, we're actually voting not to stripe or to be not striped?
No, no, so the contract, the item on our consent agenda actually has nothing to do with the striping itself, it has to do with the installation. So we'd be voting to move forward the installation, but then we will subsequently indicate our desire to ask staff to reengage the community about what the striping should look like on the turf that's currently being manufactured, but hasn't been striped yet.
So Sage's position is that they do not want it striped at all?
No, no, I think there's, I think what the opposition is from some of these groups is that they didn't want it to be football striped. They want, and maybe, I'm having a little bit of Wi-Fi funniness, so some of your screens are freezing up on me, but I think that's what the issue is, that they don't like the current striping proposal because it's too football oriented and not flexible enough for other sports, like lacrosse or ultimate frisbee or whatever.
Well, this is, Kim, there seems like a variety of issues here. One is the community engagement part, making sure that the folks who use the field were heard and had input, so we didn't end up with the outcome where we have at this additional cost. The second part is, and I meant to mention this earlier, though it may be a $25,000 cost, at this point, we will have long-term costs by weaving in the stripes that would come up in the future versus... The third option is right now, there's a participatory offering for the clubs to stripe temporarily the field for each other. So I think we would have better long-term impact if we hear from the clubs who are using it so that everybody can use it instead of just a few.
Now, and I, Kim, I hear you, I will say, we have done a lot of community input around Memorial Stadium and this is a really difficult piece of property to get consensus on. And we've been hearing from these groups that are writing us now for a long time, but I don't, I don't know exactly how we landed right where we are because I think that happened internally. So all I'm saying is, I think the community engagement piece, of course, is necessary and important. I don't know that it will get us to like a beautiful kumbaya, everyone agrees about striping, just, this is my prediction.
This is Sage, I have a follow-up. I mean, I guess we didn't really, to your point, Esther, a lot of work has been done to ensure lots of groups can continue to use it. There was a talk of reducing the stadium size, which would have made it unusable for some groups, so it's true, there has been a lot of work around this on staff's side, I appreciate that. I think there wasn't a problem with the striping, we had a problem with worn-out turf. So I didn't hear that, you know, this group couldn't play because this group striped and stuff. That wasn't the problem we were trying to solve, we just happened to be replacing the turf because it was worn out. So I don't, unless I'm wrong in this, I don't sense, sorry for the background noise, I don't sense that there's a problem in the groups communicating and using and doing the different sports on the field. But we could just continue to do what we've been doing.
Maybe what you're saying is, why are you changing the striping? Why didn't you just order replacement turf with the same old striping that's on there?
Pretty much, because I didn't think there was a problem. And, you know, I'm new to this issue and trying to advocate for those groups that I'm representing and bringing to us, and they have emailed you, the Sports Commission did make a statement.
What's the harm in moving this to the next agenda if we don't have enough information at this point?
I'm gonna ask Jade if he can tell us if there will be an impact on how soon we have to vote on this bid in order to avoid a change in the cost.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Jade Dunnus, Capital Projects Director. No, there's, we've already went past the time where the materials increased, there was an 8% materials increase in April, and so we've already experienced that, we ordered pre-materials increase, and so that $25,000 that was mentioned will apply to any reorder that we do at this point.
Jade, I think we're wanting to know if the contract we're voting on, on the consent agenda, which regards the installation, not the purchase of the turf, will be affected in any way if we don't vote on it tonight?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. We, it's hard to say because we don't know when we'll have a decision. And if we have to rebid, if this exceeds what the, you know, we're seeing materials costs on everything go up. We could initiate the contract and have them start, but at some point, I don't, I have to admit, I don't know enough about turf installation to know that if you put the base down, if there's concern about having that base open, and I would assume there would be because you're accumulating dust and debris and potentially you're affecting the drainage of that base, and so you'd need to have that turf available pretty much as the base is being built, you know, as soon as the base is built. So the timing of getting that decision made is pretty important. Without that decision, I don't know, there would be a limit on how far we could, I would say they could contract, feel comfortable moving forward on the project.
So Jade, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
I think that the question is, if they wait two weeks, are the bids still good that we currently have for the installation that's on council tonight?
I believe, I believe yes, they would be.
And I think, again, the key is the relationship between these different kind of decision points. And Ms. Roney, I understand what you're saying in terms of participation and collaboration and, as the mayor said, we have had a lot of community dialogue around this, particularly focusing in on the user groups. But Jade, the question is, the item on the agenda tonight is about installation. We have to have a contract to install whatever the turf is. We're, you know, there's turf design and then there's turf installation. And tonight's agenda item is turf installation.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and there's site work associated with it as well. There's, this base is not, doesn't drain well, so we're having to rebuild the base and relocate stormwater infrastructure that's under there. So there's a lot of site work, but yes, it is about turf installation. And I had staff text me and confirm that the two-week delay is something that we can accommodate and if that was council's choice.
Thank you for that last clarification, City Manager Campbell, because if the public is as confused as I am about this conversation, I don't really understa, I'm not tracking. But I think I have it now and I think that we can just move forward with the agenda item and then determine what the turf design would be later. Is that okay with everybody? Because as you all, like, come different angles, it is confusing me even more. So, thank you.
Well, and so if that sounds good, which is us me, we could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and then we'll do the second step of that, which is nod our heads and ask staff to engage with the community around the striping.
Okay, in spirit with that, I will move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second, Shanika.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Do you have questions about anything else on the consent agenda before we open it up for comment? I think we have one, if I recall, we have one person signed up to speak under the item, right, Maggie? Nobody, we have no one signed up to speak. Okay, never mind, she's giving me, okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote for the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Councilwoman Turner. Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, now next, please, everyone, indicate your request to staff to engage with the community regarding the proposed striping for the replacement turf for Memorial Stadium. Everyone want staff to go ahead and do that?
I would like to get some clarification. It's still a little fuzzy, you know, because when Sage first started out, she was saying something about they didn't want any, you know, just a clear field so everybody could stripe it for themselves. And then I felt like they were going back and forth with, this team wants this, this team wants that, or whatever. So it isn't either, we just want a blank field, that they could all just stripe when they get ready, is that what we're doing, is that what we had it for?
Well, but I think one thing that the staff would do is go out, make sure that that's really what's desired of the different groups. Because that's not what we have right now, it's not completely blank.
And when I say that, generic, if you had sort of a generic, just, you know, certain, yeah, so, okay.
And it may be, now, I will tell you, one of the things that makes Parks and Rec completely crazy and very similar to the show itself is when people ask to be able to stripe our facilities themselves. We do not like that, when they do that. Mostly this comes up in the context of pickleball, which would like to restripe all of our tennis courts with pickleball stripes if they could. But anyway, that's generally not a great practice to let everyone run out there with their own bucket of paint, but thank you for the offer.
But good, but good, I'm glad you explained that, Esther, because we do not, you know, a lot of us do not understand what it really takes and, you know, and the problem issue of the call, so it's good that you said that Parks and Rec would prefer not to because of a lot of, you know, reasons that...
We save that for the Vance Monument, everyone can, just kidding, bad joke, all right.
So I imagine that Parks and Rec will do that.
Bad joke.
I feel that Parks and Rec will come back with a few scenarios and cost associations with each.
Okay.
Right? Okay, I'm good.
But now we just, so, later on, are we gonna be spending two hours talking about striping Memorial Stadium turf?
We will, absolutely will spend two hours.
Can we delegate this to staff?
It is delegated to staff, it was never delegated to us, just probably meddling in it.
Can we verify that, you know, like, we're not gonna get into this conversation and decide whether football or lacrosse or pickleball is the best sport, that, you know, we're gonna give this to staff with the understanding, I mean, you know, based on our discussion, seriously?
Well, I mean, since we're talking about it, how much is the total cost of turf in general? Because this is a significant investment as a whole, it's not just a $25,000 investment.
The full cost of the turf, not the project before you, but just the turf, is around $310,000. So just the turf that gets striped, what they roll in here already manufactured, is $300,000.
And then we install it, so if we make this mistake and then have to fix it later, it's a much bigger mistake than $25,000.
And I would also point out that the reason staff recommends the striping is because of the ongoing maintenance cost and staff cost that it takes to stripe the field every time, for football and for soccer.
Which is why that, I think the user groups coordinated to tackle that and pull it off of a staff need. And now, to Esther's point, maybe that's not a desirable thing, but that is their point in saying, we'll help them stripe.
And I mean, not to get into weeds, which apparently we're going to anyway, but, you know, what you have to do is require that people use only certain products. I know this because a group I was associated with made the mistake of striping a bicycle and we ended up paying $10,000 to because it stuck on the church's pavement. So that's the issue, is like, you know, somebody comes and they use permanent paint, you can't fix it on AstroTurf. And that's why, that's probably why Parks and Rec doesn't want people coming out there with their own product.
And, Whistler, if I could also add that for some of our user groups that are the most diverse and the most economically impacted, who need to use the field, they do not have the resources to be able to do this either. So if you're talking about football and the league that the football, those are the most diverse groups that use those fields on a regular basis that we program for and we have camps for, and so they don't have that same opportunity of having volunteers that go out and do this. So that was another reason that staff had recommended getting it permanently striped.
And to be clear, that is what the volunteers are saying they would do, right? The group, the different user groups are saying, "We'll help with the football striping", we didn't realize. So we'll stripe our own and we'll stripe theirs too, is what they're saying. I mean, I'm trying to advocate for these sports groups, guys, I'm the sports liaison, this is the most I've ever learned about turf too. But they feel pretty strongly that they're not gonna be able to use it as is in all the groups and they didn't see a problem with the lack of striping in the beginning. So I guess I don't want to hold up this whole agenda. So I'm a nod in support for... Thank you.
Okay, all right, we did it, we did it, all right. Uh-oh, Maggie's already redoing her end time here. Okay, moving on, we had one public hearing item tonight, but as I mentioned at the top of the meeting, we are not going to hear the item regarding home stays tonight, we are going to hear it on May 25th. So I do need a motion to continue the public hearing to consider an amendment to Articles 2 and 16 of the UDO to update definitions and regulations related to home stays. to update definitions and regulations related to home stays until May 25th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So move.
This is Gwen's second.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roni.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We have one item of unfinished business. This is a vote on a resolution authorizing submission of the city's annual action plan for the 2021-2022 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing the city manager to sign all contracts or agreements required for the implementation of the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan. This public hearing was held on April 27th, and so we won't take any additional comment tonight because we took our public comment at the last meeting. So before I entertain a motion, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this item? If not, can I get a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of the city's annual action plan for 2021-2022 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing the city manager to sign all contracts or agreements required for the implementation of the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan?
I'll move, Mrs. Sage.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I'll do a roll call vote. Myself, aye. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roni.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to new business. First, we have, under new business item A, three items regarding fiscal year 2021-2022 fees and charges. And our new finance director, Tony McDowell, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tony McDowell, Finance Director. Taylor Floyd, our Budget Manager, is also with me this evening, and we're gonna, much like we do with the budget work session presentations that we share with you all, we're gonna tag team this one as well. So if we have some slides, if we could pull those out, that would be great. All right, so as the mayor mentioned, the item for you all tonight is the proposed fees and charges for fiscal year 21-22. And before I get into the presentation, I'll just mention that these proposals were presented to the Finance Committee a few weeks ago in April. The Finance Committee endorsed staff's recommendations with some slight changes to the original parking fee proposals. And so those revised parking fee proposals are part of what we have before you tonight. And Taylor will talk a little bit about, a little bit more about that. But I'm gonna kick off, and I'm gonna spend the first part of the presentation talking about the water rate realignment. We're gonna talk a little bit about the capital improvement fee, some history on that fee, the fee that went away in July of 2020. We're gonna talk about the rate realignment plan that our consultants at Raftalus have put together for us and is before you all tonight for consideration. And we're also gonna share some additional information on customer classes, rate history, and comparison to other cities. And some of that was information that you all had requested at one of our budget work sessions earlier. And then after that, I'll turn it over to Taylor, and he'll run through the other fee changes, cover the ones we're recommending for adoption, and also go over the ones we're recommending for review midway through next fiscal year. I will add quickly before we move on, there was an item, or there is an item on tonight's agenda for you all to approve related to nonprofit fee waivers that was not reviewed by the Finance Committee. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that. But we can go to the next slide. So our rate realignment plan, so just quickly, some information about our water fund. Outside of our general fund, it's our largest operation in our city budget. The budget ranges somewhere between $30 to $40 million every year. Because it is, it's a standalone enterprise system that charges a rate to its customer, and because it is a large system, it receives a separate debt rating than the rest of our operations, so a separate debt rating from the general fund. That current debt rating is AA1, which is a really good debt rating for a water system of our size. And one of the reasons that we have a high debt rating is that we do rely on consultants to develop a rate model for us, and we look at it a multi-year perspective when we develop that rate model to make sure that we have enough money not only available to cover our capital and operating needs in the water fund, but also meet some of the debt coverage ratios that our rating agencies at Standard and Poor's and Moody's like to see for an enterprise our size. So just some additional information on this page. Like I said, it's a substantial operation. We have about $11 million that we spend annually out of the water fund to maintain our capital infrastructure. And we fund that with a mixture of pay-as-you-go money and debt. And we have about $5 million that we spend annually in debt right now. And we're actually getting ready to go out and issue some additional debt for the Norfolk Dam project that's nearing completion. That's a $40 million project, and we're anticipating issuing the debt for that project in late summer or early fall. We also have another large project that's coming up in the next few years, and that's replacing some of our meters. And that's approximately a $20 million project that we're gonna be looking at in the upcoming CIP. Next slide, please. So just a little history on our water capital improvement or CIP fee. Prior to the early 2000s, the water system here in the Asheville area was governed by a regional model. And what that meant, one of the biggest things that meant was that the budget each year for the water system had to be approved by city council, by county commissioners, and also by the regional water authority, which was a board that was appointed by the city council and by the county commissions. And because of that, there were some struggles over the years to get rate increases passed by all three of those entities. And so when the city took over full control of the system in the early 2000s, we faced some fairly significant capital needs in the water fund. And so in early, or in December 2007, we issued $39 million in debt in the water fund to begin to catch up on some of those water capital needs. And when we did that, we adopted the CIP fee at that time to help fund that debt and also to provide an ongoing source for capital as we move forward with the water system. Next slide, please. So that water, or that CIP fee was in place from 2007 until approximately 2020. And what happened during that time was, in 2018, there was a Supreme Court opinion issued related to a case that was brought before them related to water and sewer impact fees. And that case and that ruling triggered a number of lawsuits across the state of North Carolina against water utilities and the fees that they were charging. And the city of Asheville was not immune to that. We were, one of the lawsuits was filed against us a few years ago, and we can go to the next slide. And as a part of the settlement for that lawsuit, we agreed to discontinue charging the capital improvement fee. So on July 1 of 2020, we discontinued that fee. And what that meant was a lost revenue for us of about $7.5 million to support our capital infrastructure. So given the timing of that lawsuit and the settlement and the fact that it was coincided with the start of the pandemic, we decided to not seek a rate increase last year to begin recouping that fee. Instead, we began working with our financial consultants at D E C that you all heard from during the budget work sessions, as well as our rate consultants at Raftalus, to develop a plan to begin recovering that capital revenue over time. And that's what we're presenting to you all tonight, the first year of that plan for adoption. Next slide. So the proposal before you all tonight, like I said, begins to recover the rate or the revenue over time. We're not trying to recover the full $7.5 million in the first year. This first year, the revenue that we'll get back will be about $3.5 million. And the rate structure, which was attached to the staff report that we sent out to you all, recovers that revenue through a combination of adjustments to the base fee as well as the volumetric or user charge. And the base fee, the structure is set up such that customers with larger meters will pay a higher fee. And then the volumetric fees, the user rates, will go up approximately 6% for all customers except for our wholesale customers. Next slide. So just a little information before we finish off on the water piece. You all had requested some information about our water customers and how many were in residential versus commercial. And you can see that our rates, our customer classes are heavily weighted towards residential. And so when we look at beginning to recover some of this lost revenue, it does mean that the bulk of the need or the ability to recover that revenue is gonna have to fall onto the residential class, simply because they are such a large part of our overall customer class. So it's hard to recover that much money unless the bulk of that comes from our residential customers. Next slide. And then just a little history, you all had asked some questions about the rate adjustments that we had made in prior years. We actually began in FY '12, so about nine years ago, making annual increases to the water rates and increasing rates on the non-single-family users at a higher percentage than we were on single-family users to begin to try and more equitably reflect the cost of service. And so you can see for that most recent year, prior to the pandemic, when we made adjustments, we made higher adjustments to irrigation, multifamily residential, large commercial users, and tried to keep the single-family manufacturing and small commercial rates increases lower, again, to try and reflect the cost of service and make that more equitable. Next slide. So I'm actually gonna pause here and let David Melton, our Water Resources Director, talk us through this slide.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, everybody. David Melton, Director of Water Resources. As a part of this project and redoing the rate structure, is we wanted to see how we compare to other cities. So I reached out to the UNC School of Government Environmental Finance Center to get this information. So the first survey that we did was looking for what, how are water rates compared to similar median household incomes with us? And we were slightly below average in that class. Then we expanded this survey a little bit to see how we compared statewide. And again, we were slightly below average compared to all the utilities surveyed. And this is our proposed rates that we, and this is where we scored with that. Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, David. We can go on to the next slide. So getting near the end here, just to kind of summarize. So with the changes that are proposed for next year, single-family residential users, the average single-family residential user would see their bill increase from $56.86 up to $63.42. But we just wanted to point out again, with the CIP fee in place in FY '20, the rates that we're gonna be looking at and the bills that folks will be looking at in FY '22 are still lower than they were in FY '20. And attached to the staff report tonight is some information on other user classes, such as commercial. And you all can see how the new rate structure would impact those classes as well. Next slide. So just to kind of wrap up on the water rates, and then I'll turn it over to Taylor. What we're proposing tonight, it meets legal requirements of the lawsuit settlement, which is, of course, is important. It minimizes the burden on customers by spreading the revenue recovery over time. And we're also committed to going back and continuing to work with Raftalus to refine the recommendations that we have from them for the future years and try and make sure we minimize the rate increases as best we can in future years, but still make those rate increases as necessary to meet the operating and capital needs of the system and also maintain our debt ratings from the rating agencies. So like I said, you can go to the next slide. I think that's the end of my part, and I'll turn it over to Taylor to talk about the other fees.
Thanks, Tony. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have quite a few changes I'll run through quickly, but again, feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So this is a summary of fees that were new fees that we're recommending for adoption. The Historic District Subdivision Review, that's basically just aligning that fee with a new process change that was implemented in the U D O, requiring review by the Historic Resources Commission. Obviously, that takes more staff time, so we're just kind of trying to align the fee with that. These design review areas, there are three: downtown, riverfront, and the newly established hotel design review area. And this essentially aligns fees so that they're consistent across those three review areas between those minor and major work types. And then finally, the sidewalk fee in lieu. We have historically charged sidewalk fee in lieu. We stopped temporarily due to some lack of clarity in state law, but that's been cleared up with some recent changes. So the staff recommendation is to reinstate the fees as they're outlined there in alignment with state law and zoning text amendment that was recently passed by council. So before I move on, any questions on those?
Taylor, this is Kim. I have a question about the sidewalk fee in lieu, if we could go back to slide 14. So from my understanding, with the fee in lieu, there's two parts of this. One, we don't want folks to opt out of building sidewalks because it's cheaper to just pay a fee. And the other thing was that if it's just going to be like the sidewalk that goes to nowhere, that the fee should be enough that we could build a sidewalk to fill in a gap somewhere else. So how does this relate to our previous fee in lieu? And is it enough to essentially build a sidewalk per square foot in some of the places that we have need in the city?
That is a question that I believe we have Todd O'Glechini or Shannon Tuck, perhaps from the Planning Department, that they could maybe answer.
And then while we have other folks on the call, if we could apply the same thinking to the ADA curb ramp, because we have a lot of ADA issues in our city, and I want to make sure that we can at least meet the need that we have and not just have folks paying a fee to get out of building it.
I think Jessica can answer the question, if you all don't mind. Jessica Morris.
Speak, Jessica, where are you? I saw her little chat box come up.
Yeah, she's on mute, though.
Here I am, sorry about that. I can answer your question in general. So there, a few months back, Shannon Tuck brought forward some amendments to the U D O that spoke to sidewalk fee in lieu. And part of that included adding some additional criteria to make it much less, or I should say, much more difficult, I would say, for developers to opt out of building sidewalks. So this is sort of a dual thing, where we wanted to make it more difficult for them to opt out, so we included additional criteria that they would have to meet in order to qualify. And then if they do qualify, we also raised the fees. So these are not the same fees that we used to use. We've raised them to be commensurate with what we would pay now in general in terms of a sidewalk square footage. That was another thing that we changed. So it used to be per linear foot, but as you know, the width of a sidewalk, the requirements are different in different zones. And so we changed it to a per-square-foot charge to help recognize that fact. And all of the components of the sidewalk fee in lieu have been increased to reflect current costs.
Thank you. And do we have an idea on if that's the same application for the ADA curb ramp? I just know there's so many places where we end up needing retaining walls, for example. And so I know the cost of building is always going up.
Yes, same for that as well.
Thank you, Jessica.
Sure.
Thanks for jumping in there, Jessica. Any other questions on these new fees?
I have one, real quick. This may be a brad question. So these design review areas, could catch, didn't think about the fees. The major works, can we further delineate by use? Could we charge a hotel that, say, has 125 bathrooms a higher fee than an apartment complex that maybe has 25, but they're same square footage? I mean, is there something we can do there? I just wonder, the way that hotels go, you know, they considerably take more review and more staff time, I'm wondering if they could be having a higher fee than others in their major works category?
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Turner. I would say that this would require a little bit of additional review and research to make sure that we were fully prepared and authorized to make such an additional level of delineation. What I can say is that, generally speaking, we are allowed to charge these types of fees. And I think that the level of the fee has to be based on the logical nexus of the project's impacts on the surrounding area as well as being reasonably proportional. And it's that proportionality requirement that could, I think, address your concern, which is if we have a certain project- which is if we have a certain project that is going to have a greater degree of impact, including on the existing infrastructure or the like, then the possibility to charge a larger fee, I think, is possible. And that's something we would need to review from multiple levels before we could immediately say yes to that question. But generally speaking, I would probably steer away from simply saying that we would do it based upon a specific generalized use category and focus more on the actual impact of particular projects, which could be described further based upon the size and complexity.
Okay, that makes sense. And I don't want to hold us up on this particular review and set of fees. I know we're getting down to the deadline, but I do think we should, it's something we should look at in the future. One building's going to have hundreds of bathrooms and one's not. There are different impacts, sewer line sizes, et cetera. Thank you.
Any other questions on this group of fees? I think we can move to the next slide then. So these are changes to fees. The first set there is increasing the rates for advertisements on transit buses. Those haven't changed since 2008. And the new rate is based on staff research on similarly similarly sized systems. And just to make a note, we do offer a discount for nonprofits and city-sponsored events that utilize that advertising opportunity. The second one, the Nature Center admission, it's a $2 increase for city residents, and the actual admission fee varies based on age. And it is also a $3 increase for non-city residents. Just a little more detail on that, based on a previous study, current, the current admission fees are low compared to similar venues nationwide. And this will also offset the loss of operational contribution from the Friends of the Nature Center that that group has provided over the last few years. They'll continue to support the Nature Center through capital projects, but this fee increase will keep the Nature Center from meeting additional subsidy from the General Fund for Operations. So any questions on these before I move on to the next one? All right, next slide, please. So these are, we call them other, the fire safety inspections. Those are actually required for every structure in the city other than single-family homes. And it is truly a restructuring of those fees with the intent being that to make it easier for businesses, property owners, and even our own staff to to estimate what those fees are going to be, apply those fees equitably and fairly. It actually ends up with some, some folks will have increases, some will see decreases, but it does better align those fees with the complexity of the inspection. It will also offset the cost of a third-party billing system that should improve our collections and and offer some more flexibility for for folks to pay these fees. The second piece, outdoor special event fee discounts, as Tony mentioned, this did not go to a finance committee, but it is really not a change, but just to continue providing a 75% discount on use and permanent fees for outdoor special events that have historically been provided to nonprofits. That was part of a program that was approved by council but expired at the end of 2019. And this would formalize that discount within the fee manual.
This is Taylor. Is it? So it's all nonprofits, even religious groups?
That is a, again, I think we might have Nikki Reed or John Filman from Community Economic Development that might be able to speak to that specifically. I certainly do not know the answer.
Good evening. This is John Filman, Community Event Manager with Community Economic Development. Yes, Councilwoman, which where this is available for all nonprofit organizations, all 501(c) nonprofit organizations, including churches that are registered in the state of North Carolina.
And is this our strategic event partnership?
This is, this is not the Strategic Event Partnership Program, but this is a piece that has been included as part of the program for, well, since Mayor Bellamy was in office. And because we don't currently have a Strategic Event Partnership Program for the 2020 through 2022 calendar cycle, we are wanting to continue at least offering the 75% discount to the organizations that have received that.
Hi, John. This is Sage, and I'll just, you know, I've been involved in downtown events seen through other boards that I'm on for a long time. And John has done a really great job in recent years in coming to us and saying, we're being, there's so many events, there's so many events. Everybody's trying to have events. How do we prioritize the nonprofits and the agencies that we really want to support and our minority-owned businesses and all of these agencies coming together? And I thought this was a really helpful thing. I'm glad to see it's still here. It helps ensure that our local groups are able to participate and continue as these, like, larger festivals and events try and come into Asheville. I'm supportive. Thank you.
All right, if there aren't any other questions on these, we'll move to the next slide. So several changes related to parking services. And one thing before I get into those, I want to make a note. We did notice that there was a pretty significant error in the staff report on page 12, which overviews the changes. There's a bullet that says, remove existing discounted monthly rate for van built and battery park. And it should say, review. So that's a pretty notable error on on our part. So yes, that is not removing that discount, it is reviewing that discount. So I just wanted to make that clear before I got into the details on this one. The the primary change in the parking fund is taking hourly rates in in the garages from $1.25 to $2 an hour. And add the recommendation of Finance Committee, the first hour will be provided free to all hourly parkers. That change reduces our expected revenue increase, additional revenue from that, from the $2 an hour, by about $170,000. And one more note, this change is planned to take effect in conjunction with the replacement of gating equipment in the parking garages that is, I think, well past end of life. So that's one piece. We're also providing some additional monthly parking options to try to provide some flexibility, especially for folks that work downtown. That includes a half-day, a 12-hour rate, and an overnight and weekend monthly parking options. We're also reducing some monthly parking fees in off-street lots, again, to try to help provide a variety of options for for folks to utilize.
Yes. Taylor, I have a question. We're also eliminating the use of cash for our garage parking fee. Are we going to give notice to the community or provide signage for folks who don't carry plastic?
Yeah, I think we've been working with with Cape on how to roll this out and make sure that folks are aware. That is certainly a significant change, and I know it's in large part driven by the the just lack of vendors that provide this type of equipment that take change. I don't know if Ken Putnam or or Garrett Mail want to add on to that at all.
This is Ken Putnam, Director of the Transportation Department. Yes, that's a very good question. And I want to clarify, it's only eliminating coins. Currency is still, will still be accepted by the machine, so it's just coins. In addition to that, we are going to add equipment for those people that want to pay for their parking experience before they get to their car. They can go up to a lock, a pay machine, and they'll be able to use currency and coins there, as well as the credit and debit cards.
Thank you.
So, go ahead.
I was just going to speak up and really support for all this, and I appreciate y'all taking the input from PED. I chaired the Parking Committee for a long time. We talk about this downtown all the time. Parking has been a huge thing. There are some really great wins here. The 12-hour parking for workforce is a huge win. The beginning of the first hour free and putting that back, especially coming out of the COVID pandemic, is a is a big win. I appreciate everyone's effort on this. It's been a very detailed process, but these are great outcomes for the parking fees.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And that's definitely been the the work of the the staff at Parking Services, coming up with a lot of different scenarios, trying to figure out what would work best for their customers. And on that note, you know, really sort of a lot of the intent around this, too, is is trying to push some of the more short-term parking to the on-street and and longer-term parking to the garages. And hopefully, through some additional enforcement in in the on-street time time limits, that will turn over some of those spots more than they are currently. So when you're driving through downtown, you just want to pop in somewhere, then there there's more likely to be a a spot available closer to to where you're going if you're just going, again, for for a short period of time. One more thing I did want to note, that last bullet there, is that very important, again, for the ongoing operations, is that this will help provide some additional resources for capital maintenance in the parking garages. That's something that I know the the staff is is hopeful to work on moving forward. Any other questions on parking? All right, next slide then. So this is a little unique. These are not not recommended fee changes. So we had, we are not recommending increases to either the solid waste or stormwater fees, but we are going to recommend a review, a mid-year review during the next fiscal year. And really, the reasons behind that are primarily that we wanted to limit the impact of free fee increases that are kind of citywide. We knew that we were going to have to do the water one to start that that recovery of that CIP revenue. So we wanted to be mindful of that. But I do want to make note that there are there are significant needs in in both sanitation and stormwater services. And we'd really like to take an opportunity to talk to you all about those services and the needs associated with them and how we might address them and and what the impact on the fees would be through that and and perhaps get a little more focus on that outside of, you know, our normal budget process so that so that it doesn't kind of get, you know, overshadowed. We got a lot going on as every year as part of the budget process. So we're hoping that mid-year review, again, we can, we can really focus in on those two services. Any questions about that? All right, I think we're on to the last slide. So yeah, in summary, the recommended changes, the water rate realignment begins to recover the loss of that capital fee while still maintaining rates below the FY 20 amounts. We have some minor adjustments to other fees that help offset the cost of services and some improvements to those services. And then again, that mid-year review of sanitation and stormwater fees will hopefully reduce the the impact of fee increases citywide while still providing us that opportunity to have that discussion with you all. That is the end of my presentation. If no one has any questions. I see Ken.
This is Kim. I have two questions lingering. Going back to the sidewalk fee in lieu, now that it's per square foot, what was, do we know what our previous linear foot sidewalk fee in lieu was? I see Ken's got a hand up.
This is Ken Putnam. It was $40 a linear foot.
Okay, thank you. And then the second thing, I'm just going to refer to this so that when folks are trying to follow along. On our city council agenda, the document attached to this, which is the Water Resources Fees and Charges, at the bottom has a Water Rate Model Details list linked. So my question around the water rates is, are we able to assess the fees by use? For example, commercial versus manufacturing? Or would it be by the size of the meter, for example, four versus six versus eight?
Just Tony, I was going to see if David wanted to take a stab at answering that.
Sure. Thanks for this question, Kim. I think it's a little bit of both. The differentials that we had in place previously are still there. Plus, you've got the base fee. So if you've got the larger meter or the you're able to get more capacity of water, you you're going to pay a higher base fee. Does that answer your question?
It does. So that, when I'm looking at this document, I'm just seeing that essentially, even though we're talking about a water rate increase, and then also when we look two years back, it really does help me to see those three columns of 2020, 2021, and the anticipation for 2022. My concern is that when we're in this year of recovery, that we might consider shifting some of that burden towards our high-volume commercial or manufacturing and lessen the burden on our residential and smaller commercial. So I think we might want to consider that change to the size of the meter to address the impact on the residential users. That said, I do think it's really important for us to keep our water system infrastructure updated. Our water is very precious. It's worth mentioning, remember all the brown water and broken pipes? I mean, we're, we've been having a little reprieve from that, but we have serious infrastructure needs in that area.
And that is true. So but ever since the Water Authority ceased to exist in 2005, I believe it was, and after a lot of litigation, we now have a really robust capital maintenance program in place for, and it's a multimillion-dollar program in place for our water resources and infrastructure. And I would note, this last year, we completed the Norfolk Dam project, right? I mean, this is a little difficult because people don't see these massive projects that's so vital to maintaining our system. We're a lucky city. We have one of the best water systems. And we have, we own all the land that our watershed is on, so can't say enough what a valuable resource it is for our community. Can't take it for granted. Folks, we're, we, do any of you have any more questions and staff about the fees and charges? We've got this slightly complicated motion system we got to do here with these, where I'm going to need three motions. And then we have, I believe, at least one person signed up to speak under this item. Any other questions? Okay, so here's what I need. I need a, the first motion I need is a motion and a second to adopt an ordinance establishing the Fees and Charges Manual for Fiscal Year 2021-22.
This is Gwen. So moved.
Shouldn't take a second.
Okay, and then I need a motion for us, to adopt an ordinance establishing Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Water Resources Fees and Charges.
This is Antonette. So moved.
This is Gwen. Second.
Okay, and then finally, can I get a motion, a second, to adopt an ordinance amending the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Fees and Charges Manual to include a special event fee discount?
This is Kim. Motion.
Shouldn't take a second.
Okay, and then I think we've got one person signed up to speak, and maybe they are on the call. Staff, you'll let us know.
Council, our first and only caller, is Scott Vance. Scott, I'm going to open up your phone line. Scott, your line is open.
Hello, everybody. Yeah, I'm 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 here. Thank you very much. Please excuse me, I might seem a little rusty, but this is the first time I've been involved in a public setting or forum for quite some time. I have been like a bear, I guess, hibernating amid the pandemic like everybody, and now ready to come out of my den and get on with life. So before I come out of, into the light, though, I just want to say that I like the black bear, would need to make sure that it was safe for me to emerge from my safe haven. And in the realm of Asheville, I feel very safe and comfortable here. My name is Scott Vance, and since you cannot see me, I have a long white hair and a beard, and I would make Santa proud, I guess, with my beard right now. It's really growing. With that and all my wrinkles and blemishes, I'm a little hesitant to come expose myself where, you know, people might apply a value judgment that is not quite true. Let's be honest, Willie Nelson would laugh and how I love Let's be honest, Willie Nelson would laugh and how I look and probably the reason I was told not to go into television and stay with radio. But seriously, I'm speaking from the heart, and the reason I'm retiring in Asheville soon is because while visiting my daddy there, Garland Vance, I was able to see that I would be very comfortable in my skin there, whether I wear a three-piece suit or my tie-dye Dancin' Bear Grateful Dead t-shirt, which I happen to be wearing now. So I just have become aware of a situation that I don't think it's that much of a priority or doesn't seem the little, being on the meeting with you all today, which I'm very grateful that you're giving me the opportunity, but also what I've read about some of the past meetings that you've all held and what seems to be the priorities. But in my, you know, just discovery that was just made, you know, just a few days ago, there seems to be an issue with one of my descendants monument there that I'm very familiar with, and I would like to kind of weigh in on that. But at this time, I apologize, I've been under the weather health-wise and I need a little time to try to see what I can do to help the city of Asheville, especially since I'm going to be living there very soon. So I was just wondering, not to keep rambling, but would I be given the opportunity to kind of table, table the issue?
All right, well, we didn't get to what it was that the request was to table, so I'm sorry for that. But I don't think we have any other folks signed up to speak under this item, so I'm going to go ahead and move ahead with the vote unless there's any other questions or comments. Okay, the first, okay, we're going to have to do three of these votes. So the first is on establishing the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Water Resources Fees and, no, the first one should be the Motion to Adopt an Ordinance Establishing the Fees and Charges Manual for Fiscal Year 2021-2022. All right, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore. You might be on mute. Councilwoman Kilgore, will you be there? Are you? Did we lose her? Uh oh, I don't see her. Do you guys hear? No.
Mayor, I'm going to check on it. This is Deborah.
Okay, I'm going to go to the next person. Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Councilwoman Kilgore, you're back. I assume you had a little technical difficulty. We just did our first vote on the adoption of the ordinance establishing the Fees and Charges Manual for Fiscal Year 2021-2022. Do you vote aye or nay?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll do the next one. This is the vote on the Motion to Adopt an Ordinance Establishing Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Water Resources Fees and Charges. All right, we'll start with you, Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
No.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
And myself, aye. And then finally, our motion and second to adopt an ordinance amending the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Fees and Charges Manual to include a special event fee discount. Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
And myself, aye, and Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, our last, thank you, staff, all the folks that were on that item. I know a lot of you had to hang out, get us through that one. Thank you very much. Our last item of new business is regarding boards and commissions, and I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
All right. Okay, Boards and Commissions Committee met this morning. We made the following recommendations for the Affordable Housing Committee. The Board recommends the appointment of Randy Woodard to the Housing Authority staff seat and Chris Day and Saquille Bell Rogers for the general housing experience seats. That is the motion. Can I get a second?
Antonette, I'll second.
All right. The motion and a second, I'll do a roll call vote. Mayor Manheimer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Mosley.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye.
Turner.
Great choices, aye.
Whistler.
Aye.
And myself, I'm glad you're happy with those choices. Motion carried. For the Civil Service Board, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the reappointment of Carol Goings and Carter Webb. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, you got that, Maggie? I think we got two.
This is Kim, I can second.
Okay, great. Okay, roll call vote. Mayor Manheimer. Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Mosley.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Whistler.
Aye.
And myself, aye. The Human Relations Commission, the Board recommends reappointment of Tanya Rodriguez, Dolores Venable, Veronica Coit, and the appointment to the youth member seat, Emma Worthy. The committee has also asked for the last position, and that is for, we decided for that seat to be designated to the Housing Authority, a Housing Authority resident, and that's going to be left open for targeted research, outreach. Can I get a second?
This is Kim, second.
All right, I'll do a roll call vote. Mayor Manheimer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Mosley.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Whistler.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. The last, the last recommendation is for the newly formed Design Review Committee. And the Boards and Commissions Committee, we did our due diligence. We have a recommendation for the Downtown Commission and also the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. But because this is a newly formed committee and is some ongoing discussion, there may be an alternative to our motion on tonight, so especially concerning the Downtown Commission. So before I make my recommendation, I'll just, instead of making my recommendation, I'll just open this up for small discussion in case someone has an alternative motion.
Vice Mayor, this is Sage, thank you. I just have a couple comments that may alter. I think all of these applicants are incredible applicants, and you're right, since this is new and newly forming, we may have kind of overlooked something. We have an applicant, we have five from the Downtown Commission and four need to be chosen. One of the applicants is already seated on two very large boards, the Downtown Commission and the Planning and Zoning Board, and this would be a third seat for them, which is something we try to avoid in general. I have reached out to that person and they have, that person is Guillermo Rodriguez, who is wonderful, and he has said he would stay on with his name to reapply for this next year if that was better for everyone. And the other part of this is that when we were talking about these boards coming together, I don't know if we maybe assumed and didn't write it, but we were kind of thinking the chairs of the boards would be one of the seats. So one of the folks that wasn't selective is Brian Moffett, who is a considerable leader and has run our design board for a long time. And I would really love, having spoken with all of them, I would put forth a motion to replace Guillermo with Brian Moffett under knowing that I have spoken with Mr. Rodriguez and he would return next year. I have not settled finding a fourth seat from the Riverfront, but I will reach out to them to see if there is a fourth one.
Okay, would you make a motion for your recommendation for the Downtown Commission?
Sure, I would move, let me get the document open. Make sure I have all the names. I believe that my dissonance memory, I would move that we have Brian Moffett, Robin Raines, Stephen Lee Johnson, and Kimberly Hunter.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, with the motion and second, we'll do a roll call vote or discussion.
Vice Mayor Smith, may I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
When I looked at the, when I'm looking at the details here, there's a question, it says Brian Moffett-Candler with a question mark. Does he not live in the city?
He is Chair of Downtown Commission, he's not a resident within the city, he's in the county, but he becomes highly recommended.
And we have a couple of those, I will say. I think we have three members that are not city. And I wasn't, I inquired about that because I wasn't really sure. He's a county appointee. Each of these, the Riverfront has many appointees that are outside the city, and the Downtown Commission has two county appointees and a saved seat for a business association.
It's kind of been the ongoing conversation with the committee that we only appoint a person that lives in the county if they have some special expertise that is not, that we cannot find in our regular pool of applicants. Would you say that this is the case here, or are we making an exception against the committee's advice?
I would think that Brian is an exception. The other thing is that we're trying to build a kind of a diverse pool of professionals and community advocates, and we have several landscape architects, of which we could maybe reduce and deal strongly about, would be my input.
This is Kim. So that kind of gets at where my concern is when we have like the overlap, but also when we have an opportunity to have someone who is on planning and zoning as well, I think that we may need this on our early version of this new commission. Also, that being on the Downtown Commission and Riverfront Commission are required for the majority of these seats. So I would personally like to see Guillermo help to lead us off in the start of this commission. So I would suggest Guillermo, Kimberly Hunter, Robin Raines, and Brian Moffett.
Okay, in the case that we already have a motion on the table, so because she's making an alternative motion, how does that go?
Well, you. I'll ask to accept a friendly amendment.
Yes, there you go. Sage, what do you think?
So I would request to accept my friendly amendment to consider Guillermo instead of Stephen Lee at this time, knowing that we do have an opportunity for this commission to seat a ninth member.
I appreciate the amendment, I would decline.
Okay, in that case, it seems like I'll just do a roll call vote. Yes, Mayor Manheimer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
No.
Councilwoman Roney.
No.
Councilwoman Turner. And myself, aye. That is a five to, the motion carries.
I didn't get to vote, Shanika, but I.
You didn't get to vote? I'm sorry, I skipped, who accounted you?
You just knew I was going to go along with you, didn't you?
I think you are. Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
Okay, it carries. And for the other part of that Design Review Committee, we have a recommendation, and again, we are charged to seat four members, but we didn't have a great application pool. The committee went on and just appointed the three who put in the applications, but I think there is going to be some ongoing outreach. So with that being said, we recommend Jane Matthews, Ben Williamson, and Jeremy Goldstein. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, with the motion and second, I'll do the last roll call vote. Mayor Manheimer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
Aye.
And myself, aye. That motion carries. That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're to the informal discussion and public comment, and Council, don't forget, we have a closed session, so don't go anywhere. We're going to hear informal discussion and public comment. Staff will now connect live calls from our speaker queue for informal discussion and public comment. Again, we're only taking callers who signed up in advance. Callers, you will first hear staff inform Council that you're next to speak, then you will hear an automated message letting you know you are unmuted and live in the meeting. You may begin speaking after the automated message. If you accidentally drop out of the speaker queue, just redial the number and meeting code, press star three to rejoin the speaker queue. You'll have three minutes to comment, and at the end of the three minutes, you will hear a bell and staff will ask you to wrap up your comment. So staff?
First, like, under the fees and new business, the ADA came up. And this is again where the disabled fit in. I don't have a job, I don't have a nonprofit job that deals with the disabled. I just noticed how you all deal with the disabled, and you have an ADA coordinator, he's the city risk manager, Brad Stein, he should be speaking on anything, he should be, he should have been one of the staff that spoke during that fee section and talked about this idea of developers and fees and not doing their, what they're supposed to be doing with ADA compliance. But we don't know how ADA compliance works in City of Asheville. That's the problem with closing the gap. They're talking about ADA compliance, but I see very little happening there. But that's something new I just noticed, and I just wanted to say about last, your last council meeting, when the high-intensity drug trafficking area funds came up, $275,000 from the DEA and Office of National Drug Control Policy, that was one of the most mysterious conversations I've ever heard a group of politicians have. You spent a lot of time talking about astroturf and fees, but that conversation was so short about, I think it was, what it was about is Kim Roney saying, well, it's the DEA and Office of National Drug Control Policy, and it's that, it's money from those organizations, so we aren't going to use it. So I believe the next Public Safety Commission meeting is the 25th. That's a time for particularly Kim and Shanika, the chair, to show us what you've got with dealing with crime. I'm attempting to get on the Buncombe-McArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge Engagement Work Group, and will attempt to talk about a street slash illicit fentanyl solutions report to start making this, it's both reinventing law enforcement and traditional crime fighting, that like, just like that hit-to money, the high-intensity drug trafficking area money. It's time to show up about crime. It's not just what APD needs to be reimagined as, but how you all are. but how you all are dealing with crime. And that's gonna be the time for you all to show up and tell us what you've got. Because it seems like a long time since I've heard anything really about crime.
Council, our next caller is Jonathan Wayne Scott.
8/12/1931, that the citizens of Asheville elected our very first Asheville City Council under our council manager form of government. And I just wanted to give you a little flashback as to what happened the year you were born. Okay, so a whole bunch of people in Asheville and a whole lot of organizations wanted a whole lot of changes here in Asheville and Buncombe County. And they started to petition our new Senator Silas Bernard to bring a bunch of changes, including a charter change for Asheville for a new form of government and the electoral system that would accompany that. And Senator Bernard said that he would do that only if we held a referendum and the people of Asheville supported such a change. Now, we then had to create a municipal board of elections to oversee our referendum and all the elections that would follow that. And the people who were selected, there was three men. It was Owen Gudger, Joe Seaver, and William Coleman. Now, William Coleman, his name would show up in 1937 on the redlining maps and forms as he was the Loan Services Field Supervisor for the Homeowners Loan Corporation. Not a real great guy in terms of, you know, his redlining history here in Asheville. Anyway, he was the guy who was on our board of elections. We then, the same group of people, the same civic activists who wanted all of these changes, petitioned Senator Bernard to have a selective repeal of North Carolina state statute which provided for absentee balloting. And this repeal removed absentee balloting from municipal elections in Buncombe County. So the referendum that we then had, had no absentee balloting going on in it. These activists also wanted to eliminate public schools as polling places and made sure that there were really tight restrictions on poll markers to assist illiterate voters at the polls. So that's just a little bit of what was going on in 1931. And that's a little bit about how Asheville City Council was born. And I would like to have more discussions about the history of our electoral system here in Asheville. But anyway, happy birthday Asheville City Council. You're 90 years old and you're looking fantastic. Have a great night. Take care.
Council, that was our last caller. All the callers that signed up are either not in the, decided not to comment or didn't call in.
Okay, well, this is good because my dog sees a bunny out in the yard and he wants to go crazy, so. And anyway, hell, I need to give him a break, but not to go get that bunny, can you stop it? All right, folks, we have a closed session tonight. And so I believe we're going to have the closed session motion by Councilwoman Roney.
I move that Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143-318.10E. To establish or to instruct the city staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the city in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And before we vote, I know Gwen had a comment on the closed session motion.
Thank you. I understand that we're looking to purchase property for a shelter for our houseless community. But this is far bigger than the purchase of real estate. This is making the commitment to act as the lead agency in addressing the region's homelessness issue. This is making a significant strategic shift in the role of the city. In the past, the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars participating with other agencies in addressing the homelessness issue. By even discussing this purchase, we are fundamentally changing the city's role. We will lead the effort. Let me be clear, this is not just a real estate transaction. Homelessness is a huge issue. Homelessness is a crisis. The causes of homelessness are extremely difficult issues and must be addressed on a regional basis. We and the entire country have a huge problem around homelessness and the attendant issues. No one wants the city's parks and open spaces taken over by homeless camps. However, no one wants to just chase our houseless neighbors to another community either. This is a big issue and the city has a significant role to play around this issue. However, the city has no or very little expertise with running a shelter or providing wraparound services. Several regional nonprofits have run or are running shelters. The county has not only the expertise in providing wraparound services, but it has the obligation to provide health and human services under North Carolina law. The city will, if this property is acquired, take on the lead role in providing shelter and in providing health and human services. We cannot take this role without regional nonprofits, our business communities, our residential communities, our faith communities, and the county government partnering with us. We need their long-term commitments if we are going to take on this role. Following CDC guidelines during the pandemic has required the city to provide alternatives for shelter if homeless camps are being eliminated. The city has done that and paid for that using federal funds. However, those federal funds will be exhausted within two years. After those two years, the city will still own a shelter. The city will still own its lead role as the solver of the regional homelessness issue. The city will still have the primary responsibility for providing shelter and health and human services for the homeless population. While we've taken this role on during the pandemic, are we ready to take on this role indefinitely without long-term commitments from our partners? The residents of Asheville have not seen this proposal. They've not seen an estimate of the cost. They have not seen the partnerships that may or may not be in place to assist the city in this effort. By discussing this acquisition of property, we will be authorizing staff to approach other people and make offers to purchase property. In good faith, those other people should be able to trust that the city staff has authority to complete a transaction. I don't want to pull the rug out from anyone who, in good faith, negotiates with the city. So if council authorizes the staff to go ahead with this transaction, effectively, council has authorized a major shift in the city's role around homelessness. Rather than discussing this publicly, we will go into closed session and make this decision. Once staff is authorized to negotiate, the horse has left the barn, so to speak. While I recognize the city's obligation during the pandemic, I am uncomfortable with a long-term obligation without partnerships cemented in place. I want input from our community. I want a clear path to funding. The property owners of Asheville should not be required to assume all of this obligation given the potential other available resources, the city's lack of expertise around operating a homeless shelter, and given the regional nature of this homeless issue. We cannot be in this alone. Thanks.
You're muted. Muted, Mayor.
Oh, that's good, you didn't all hear me sneeze. All right, so unless there's any other questions or comments, I'm gonna do a roll call vote regarding the closed session motion. Councilwoman Roney.
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner.
Aye.
Councilwoman Whistler.
No.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Councilwoman Kilgore.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Mosley.
No.
Okay, we're adjourning to our closed session, which means we gotta log out of this meeting and log into our closed session meeting. So we will adjourn from the closed session and I will see you over there in just a minute.